No.
The appointed time having come and gone, let's ask our state senators and our state representatives to join us. Today's Senate Majority Policy Committee hearing is the second of our hearings this year designed to help us learn more about the conduct of the 2020 elections in Pennsylvania. Today's hearing was requested by Senator Duck Mastriano, who in addition to serving the 264,000 residents of the 33rd District in Adams, Cumberland, Franklin, and York Counties, also serves as the Chair of the Senate's Intergovernmental Operations Committee. As Dr. Mastriano can attest, this subject is an excellent example not of the normal layer-cake bottle of intergovernmental operations, but of the marble cake bottle. We have examples of local government, county government, state government, and federal government, all very much involved in the design and conduct of an election, and as we've seen, not always in a logical, rational, or understandable bottle. I have frequently reminded the students in the college classes which I have taught, as well as more recently our own governor, that senators and representatives and governors are not kings, we're not judges, we're not dictators. We are agents of public opinion, elected by the people for a fixed term as lawmakers to provide oversight on behalf of the public over our government agencies and of course as lawmakers. We're here today because we have all been receiving massive numbers of phone calls and emails and personal comments when we're out blocking our dogs in our neighborhoods about the conduct of this election. My office has received a record number of contacts, over 25,000 phone calls and emails as of yesterday. We all know that Pennsylvania's Secretary of the Commonwealth changed the guidance to election officials the day before the November 3rd election, which added a completely new element of doubt to our process. Issues that should have been resolved by the legislature as recommended by Supreme Court Justice Max Baer were instead carried out by the Secretary without the approval of the Senator in the House. This committee held a similar event in January of 2020 on recent changes to our state's election laws. At that time, the Secretary of the Commonwealth assured us that this process would be carried out smoothly. The large number of complaints which we have received from our constituents tells us a very different story. That's why we're here today again as agents of public opinion. Senator Mastriano and his staff have assembled a number of witnesses who will share their experiences with us regarding the conduct of this year's election. We look forward to listening to that testimony. But before we turn air, I want to introduce my good friend, our caucus administrator, and as of December 1st, our incoming Majority Leader. Congratulations to Kim Ward. Thank you for joining us. Please, Kim.
Thank you, Senator Argo. And thank you, Senator Mastriano, for inviting me to participate in what I think is very, very important for the people of Pennsylvania. As Senator Argo said, we have been inundated with calls and emails and messages in our social media. People are not feeling good nor confident about the process and the results because of that process. The President and his team deserve. This is the President of the United States, not the president of your middle school school board. So we need to make sure that they have the room, that they need to explore every avenue. So when this is over, we know that the process, what worked in it, what didn't work in it, and what we need to do to fix it, and what we may need to do to address it. This has been very, very exhausting and hard on so many in Pennsylvania. And I look forward to listening to what the testifiers and Mr. Giuliani have to say to us today. So thank you very much again, and thank you. Thank you, Senator Mastriano.
Thank you, Kim. Senator Mastriano, please.
Thank you, Senator Argo and Senator Ward. Thank you for being here and supporting us here. And welcome, everybody, to this most historic occasion and this most historic panel. And what happened here in 1863, I think today we're going to see it turning in the tide because we had not really heard the truth of the arguments made on the other side of what happened. And we're dealing with a government and leadership in Harrisburg that wants to close their ears to what's happened during this election. And sadly, many of the media that are complicit and want to write off what happened. So for me, on this battlefield and remembering what happened 157 years ago, especially 157 years ago last week, where Abraham Lincoln gave his most famous address, and I think his final sentence captures why we're here today. He said that "this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom," and that "government of the people, by the people, for the people, shut out the curse of the earth." And everything is at stake in what happened there in this election cycle. Everything in the republic is at stake. This is no game for us. And for any veteran in this room here who wore the uniforms, such as Reverend General Scott Perry, thank you for being here, sir. Put their lives on the line here fighting for a country and see that if there's a group in this state and country willing to throw away our valuable and precious freedoms here for power. You know, for me. And Mr. Perry is going to be fantastic here today. Despite the pleas for our citizens, the governor refuses to even consider that there's any shenanigans in the elections here in our state. To see the 13 million people, and he wants to discount because his guy won, that doesn't that happen. And that's just unacceptable. If there's any hint of fraud out there, we need to investigate. Any governor serving the people of this Commonwealth would put aside his petty politics, would put aside his petty politics and find out the truth. If anyone was defrauded. And at this point, he is unwilling to do that. Let me point out some hard facts here. We are in Adams County named after our second president, John Adams, who famously said, "Facts are stubborn things." Let me lay out several of these inconvenient truths as Al Burrow would have us think. There have been many allegations about voting law violations across the state, and a governor serving the people would have to move heaven and earth to ensure no one was defrauded. But yet, he's not moved that action. And even his Secretary of State, of course, says that there was no shenanigans of great concern. And I'll remind everyone that I was a no vote on the confirmation of Kathleen Bookbar four times that I interacted with her. I asked her, "Why are elections in Afghanistan more secure than in Pennsylvania?" And she sat there and blinked. She couldn't give me a straight answer. That elections are more safe and secure and a war-torn country devastated by conflict since 1979. What is going on here? The place where this all started in 1776, and we can't get an election right? You've got to be kidding me here. And so as a result of her inaction, the governor's inaction, refusal to even look into any of the allegations, and to discount the very essential freedoms of our citizens, we are here today to try to find out what the heck happened in the election. You know, likewise, our Attorney General, our senior law enforcement official here, you know, instead of being focused on making sure things are lined up in kosher before one vote was counted in Pennsylvania and the day before the election declared Biden the winner. I mean, is there nothing to see here? Could you imagine if the shoe was on the other foot? Would the media be so gracious and merciful and kind if it was a Republican? Absolutely not. And so, Houston, we have a problem here. You know, one of the most troubling things in this whole endeavor here, and it's not just because of the COVID, it's just a lack of transparency and accountability. So we're here to start shedding light on the darkness. And then, of course, we have a Supreme Court that rewrote election law, you know, Act 77, as of now. We can debate that. But the real problem was when the Pennsylvania Supreme Court decided they're going to write legislation and rewrite our law. And because of that, obviously, Pennsylvania, we got a lot of problems there. And that opened the doors to all the shenanigans and abuses and folly that we're dealing with here in the state this day. So what's going on here? Thousands of people from across the Commonwealth have reached out to us, tens of thousands, asking and demanding action. They deserve it. And as a result of the inability of our executive branch to do their job, we're stepping in here. We're co-equal members, and we're going to do our job. We're looking for transparency and truth. There's going to be no grandstanding here. We're after facts. And we're going to have a good layout here of what happened. And you're going to have to decide, good people of Pennsylvania, on what happened, and whether there's a strong case to be made or not. You know, the forgotten men and women of our great state feel betrayed by their government. And I'm with them. I feel the betrayal as well. So we undertake these proceedings today to find out what happened, and then hopefully have come up with an approach where it doesn't ever happens again. And the issues are galore. You're going to hear about poll watchers being denied access, where elections with software vendors refuse to testify before the General Assembly. Where they got to hide. Do we expect the people to trust their government? And we've got to earn their trust. This is no game, and the very republic very much is at stake. And anyone who loves this country has to put aside their petty parts of politics and allow the light shine where it is. And we're going to find the truth and celebrate it. You know, as a soldier, and now as an elected member of the state said, I'm not going to stand aside. And neither of the members around me are as well. We're going to fight and do it like for freedom and secure our republic. Too many good men and women have gone before us who have given their lives here. And to cast it aside now for power play is unacceptable. It's not going to happen. We do our great men and women in uniform, those who play down their lives and give the last little measure of devotion to great deservers if we stand aside and allow bureaucrats and corrupt politicians to steal their voice and maybe even steal elections. We'll find out. John Adrian, thank you. John Adrian, the text says that if Jesus said you're free, you're free indeed. We're going to walk as free people in Pennsylvania. This is our service. We choose this day to walk as free men and women in honor of the sacrifice, not only of Jesus love Calvary, but also in honor of the sacrifice of brave men and women in uniform who fought for and secured our freedoms. We will be relentless in our pursuit of transparency, of accountability, and truth. The time for the gathering, politics, and games is over. The time for truth and justice is now. In conclusion, as Benjamin Franklin was leading Constitutional Hall in 1787, he was approached by Mrs. Powell. And Mrs. Powell ran up to him. We surmise she knew him personally. And she said, "Well, Mr. Franklin, will we have a monarchy or a republic?" And he said, "A republic if you can keep it." This is our time to keep this republic.
We turn now to the introductions of our House and Senate members. Let's begin with our representatives here at the center of the table. Gentlemen, ladies.
Yeah, Representative Paige Irmerman, serving the Northeast part of Lancaster County.
Representative Greg Roth, from the 87th District, Cumberland County.
Representative Mike Jones, 93rd District, York County.
Representative Paul Semel, portions of Franklin County.
Representative Rock Hoffman, 89th District, Northern Franklin County.
Representative Stephanie Borowitz, from the 76th District. I'm honored to be here. Fight for freedom.
Hi, Senator Judy Ward from Blair County, representing Blair, parts of Huntington, parts of Huntington, parts of Franklin County, part of Cumberland County, and all of Fulton County.
Senator Ward, I believe you know Senator Mastriano.
Good afternoon. I'm Senator Marius Cabello, from Monroe, West Hampton County.
Senator Mike Regan, from Cumberland and York County.
Good afternoon. State Representative Dan Mau, welcome to my 91st legislative.
Representative Frank Ryan, Webinette County.
We are also joined on Zoom, Senator Brooks and Senator Hutchinson from Northwestern Pennsylvania, Senator Yaw from the Williamsport area, Senator Stefano from Southwestern Pennsylvania, Senator Lottland from Erie, Senator Martin from Lancaster County, Senator Pittman from Indiana County, Senator Pat Brown from Lehigh Valley. Also, my job as chairman is to remind our panelists to keep their microphones muted until the disheir turn to speak, and also remind everyone to strictly observe our timelapse. One other reminder to our senators and witnesses at the request of our Senate attorneys, this is a legislative hearing. Our purpose is to listen to the complaints of our constituents, the oversight of government agencies, and the need for possible legislation. We all need to conduct ourselves accordingly. With that being said, Senator Mastriano, I believe you want to introduce our first witness for 15 minutes. And we will hold to the representatives and senators, if you understand, we will hold all of our questions until the conclusion of the second panel.
I hope to simply say, "Welcome to America's mayor." Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Senators, representatives, Senator Mastriano, and all the distinguished members of the legislature of Pennsylvania, we are very, very honored and very appreciative that you are giving us an opportunity to be heard, which we've been denied almost uniformly by the media and by legislatures elsewhere. All we ask is that we listen to the facts that we're presenting and then evaluate. We can't help but to know that we're doing here in Pittsburgh, over 156 years ago, the fate of our country hung in the balance, right here on this hollow ground, for through an endless days of bloody close combat between two armies that lost over 50,000 casualties. The fate of our republic was really decided that we'd be one nation, one union, one government, sharing values that are enormously important to us. And I don't want to overstate it, but I do believe that those values are at stake, not only in this election, but in the way this election was conducted, and what we're going to do with that. Because if we allow elections in the future to be conducted the way this election was conducted, we will have lost our democracy, our representative democracy. During the course of this election, we've come pretty close to losing our right of free speech. There's been censorship that I've never seen before, of an incredible nature by big tech, big networks, big companies. They only allow one side to be heard, and they refuse to allow the other side to be heard. It's almost as if they're afraid the American people, if they should learn these facts, will find out just who they are and what they're about. This voter fraud that took place, which as you will see from the witnesses that we call, had several dimensions to it, several different ways in which it was done. The most dangerous thing is, it is very, very similar in at least six states that we've been able to study. In other words, what we're going to describe to you with these witnesses happened in roughly the same way in Michigan, Wisconsin, Nevada, Arizona, and Georgia. Primary device was the mail-in ballots. You know, there was a fierce debate over whether we should have mail-in ballots in the first place. Many scholars, many experts always felt that mail-in ballots were very dangerous because they're very easy to forge, at least more defrauded. We were warned by Justice Souter, among others. We were warned by President Jimmy Carter and former Secretary of State James Baker in a report that they did on how to make elections more secure. They warned us that the one thing to do is do not go to general mail-in voting, because every place it's been used, it's led to tremendous fraud. And that was reworded, believe it or not, in an article in the New York Times in 2012, an article they have now forgotten they wrote, that explained the same thing. And I think what you're going to find as you study your mail-in ballot procedure here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and then in the six other places, this was a terrible mistake. And it allowed the leadership of a party that had become pretty expert at voter fraud to really go wild. So witnesses we present are going to first show you that in the case of Philadelphia, and in the case of Allegheny County, and one or two other counties, the mail-in ballots that were received were not inspected at all by any Republican. They were hidden from Republicans. In the case of Philadelphia and Allegheny County, I can't be absolutely certain, but I do believe the witnesses will show that a Republican never got to see a single ballot. Now, you know how important that is to determining whether it is a valid ballot or not. There's only one time you get to do that, and that's when you separate the envelope that possesses the verifying information from the ballot. The moment you separate them, you can go home and verify. You can't go back and recount. You can't go back and check paper ballot against the machine ballot, because it's a private ballot. It's an anonymous ballot. You want to keep it that way. The only thing that identifies it is that it had an envelope. At that moment, when they're separated, gone forever. That's the moment in which inspections have been allowed timely memorial in America, Pennsylvania, all over 49 states. Several of the witnesses here have been doing this in 20 or 30 years. They've never heard of the situation in which a mail-in ballot was just put in without allowing a Republican, a Democrat, even third-party members to take one look at it and object to it, for the very reason that it's too prone to fraud. Think about this. In your state, Republicans were uniformly not allowed, kept out, put in chutes by the accounts to keep them away from seeing these ballots. Never happened before. Not only that, the same thing was done in Michigan, same thing was done in Wisconsin, and on and on and on. What's the chance that on the morning of November 3rd or 4th, when they started the count, that in each one of those places, the Democrat leadership of these highly controlled Democrat cities has some history for corruption? In the case of Philadelphia, a long history of voter fraud. I could show you the conditions. I don't think I have to. What are the odds that they're all going to wake up with the same idea? If the years and years of always examining together absentee ballots, all of a sudden, in a year in which we have a couple million of them per state, we're not going to allow any Republicans to see them? A person in Philly figures that out? Pittsburgh, Detroit, Milwaukee, Las Vegas, Nevada? Or is it more... Or is it more lively, that this was a common plan? That they started with the whole idea of having mail ballots, because it gives you a much wider range to cheat? When you have just a small number of absentee ballots, like 400,000, you have a certain range that you can cheat. When you have 250,000, or 2.5 million, you have a much bigger range to do that. So, when you hear that testimony about not being allowed to see the ballot, I have to understand it's much more important than just that individual, just that individual ballot. On election night, when I went to sleep, maybe when you did, President Trump was leading in your state by somewhere around 700,000 to 800,000 votes, depending on when you went to sleep. That's a huge number of votes. 65% of the vote had been cast. Under normal circumstances, like if this were a fair media, your state would have called for Trump. I mean, Virginia was called with 10% of the vote. It turned out to be separated by 1%. I think we may have actually won, Virginia, passed another ballot. Michigan, we were ahead by 300,000 votes. Wisconsin, more. Georgia, we were down to 90% ahead. What are the odds that they all switched overnight? They just switched. By the end of that, I think you're going to see how that, I think you're going to see how that happened. And I think there are a couple of statistics that you have to really closely, you have to really closely look at. I'll just mention them, and then we'll move on to the witnesses. We have calculated, and the evidence will show, that there were 682,770 mail-in ballots that were entered into your votes in just Allegheny County and in Philadelphia, that were not observed by any single Republican. Those ballots could have all been for Joe Biden, they could have all been for someone else, they could have had no identifying data, they could have been for the same person. There could have been multiples of them, there could have been no name on them. We have no idea if that's true. And it will be very hard now to kind of put it together. We could ask, and you could subpoena, all of the outer envelopes. Very interesting. There could have been multiples of them, there could have been no name on them. We have no idea if that's true. And it will be very hard now to kind of put them together. We could ask, and you could subpoena, all of the outer envelopes. It'd be very interesting to take a look at the 682,770 outer envelopes. It'd be very interesting if they were kept. And it'd be very interesting to see how many of them weren't filled out. But in any event, under the law of your state, which is set by you, those ballots are illegal. The judge mistakenly, in his opinion, said that we want to disenfranchise 6 million people. We don't want to disenfranchise anyone. We want to, we want to disqualify 682,000 votes, so that 74 million people are not disenfranchised. Because that's, that's what happened by the cheating that went on here. I'll give you one other enormously puzzling statistic. You sent out, in the state of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, 1,823, 148 absentee or mail-in ballots. You received back 1.4 million approximately. However, in the count for president, you counted 2.5 million. I don't know what accounts for that 700,000 difference between the number of ballots you sent out and the number of ballots that ended up in the count. That number, 2,589,242, was on your government website until yesterday. And yesterday, it was removed without explanation. I'm going to be very interested in hearing what the explanation is, and I can't imagine you could possibly certify without knowing the explanation to that, as well as the explanation to the 22,686 mail-in ballots that were returned on the day they were mailed. That's a trick. How about, they were returned, how about 32,591 were returned the day after they were mailed? Another 20,000 were returned before they were mailed. Of course, this is only, this is, I think this is a kind of a low count, and I guess the crooks in Philadelphia are disappointed in this. They only submitted 8,021 ballots from dead people, mail-in ballots for dead people. Probably easier for dead people to submit mail-in ballots than it is to vote in person. You had about 30,000 of those. We're checking the records of the cemeteries around Philadelphia. You have 4,984 mail-in ballots that were never requested, and on and on and on and on. Your, your election, because of these two counties and maybe one other, is a sham. It's a disgrace to your state. And finally, I, I don't need to remind you of this, I think I need to remind America of this. The election for President of the United States is not run by the governor of your state, it's not run by your election commissioner. The United States Constitution makes it clear who has the responsibility for running this election. Article 2, Section 1, Clause 2 of our Constitution, doesn't say that ABC gets to call the winner, or CNN. It says, "Each state shall appoint, in such manner as the legislature thereof may direct, a number of electors." It's the state legislature that controls this process. It's your power. It's your responsibility. And I think you, I think you know, and you have to convince the rest of your members, Republican and Democrat, they owe that to the people of your state, and they owe that to the people of the United States. Because if this happens without consequence, if they can just enter 600,000 some odd mail-in ballots without allowing a single Republican to, to view it, what's to say that next time they won't do a million? Or 2 million? I know crooks really well. You give them an inch and they take a mile, and you give them a mile and they take your whole country. So now we'll proceed with the witnesses.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Giuliani. I've been informed that we have also been joined on Zoom by Senator Kristin Phillips-Hill, Representative Don Kiefer, Representative Barb Gleyme from Central Pennsylvania, Representative Darrell Metcalf from Butler County, and Senator Langreahoke from Johnstown area. Senator Mastriano, would you like to introduce our next panel for the, looks to me like several people for 15 minutes as well?
Yes, thank you, Senator Argul. So our witnesses, first off, Jenna Ellis, do you have any comments for the floor? Legal advisor to President Trump.
Thank you very much, and I'll reserve my comments for the end, and I would just echo everything that the mayor so eloquently stated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we, we'd like to call forth Justin Quider from Philadelphia. Justin, are you here? Okay, outstanding. If you can come up to the table, please, my friend. And Kim Peterson out of Pittsburgh. Kim, are you here? Come forth, please. We have a seat for you here. Okay. Leah, Leah Hopes, where are you, Leah? Please come forth. Kayla, could you push those two chairs over? Thank you. And that American flag is mine, if you set it on the table, I'd appreciate it. Thanks. And then Greg Stentrum from Delaware County, you're zooming in, I believe. Oh, he's here? Yeah, of course, I met you. Come on over, brother.
Okay, if you can, among yourselves, please divide up the next 15 minutes, and again, we'll hold all questions until the end. Please begin.
I'll start. Thank you, senators and representatives, for inviting me to this important hearing. My name is Justin C. Quider, K-W-E-D-E-R. I am a resident and registered voter in the city and county of Philadelphia. I'm an attorney, I am barred here in the Commonwealth. I am a volunteer-certified GOP canvass observer. I was present at the Philadelphia Convention Center during the pre-camvass, canvass processing and counting of the ballots cast in this year's general election. I was first present as an observer at the convention center and at the count on Election Day. I returned as a volunteer observer to watch the process every day for the next 10 days. I'd approximate, I was there for about 85 hours over those 10 days. Part of the reason that I kept going back was so that I could authoritatively speak about what I saw. And again, thank you for letting me be here. Because what I saw was problematic, to say the least. I can tell you that I am an eyewitness to many issues and irregularities that were observed in Philadelphia with the processing and counting of the vote. I was a witness to too many issues and irregularities to cover in a brief opening statement. And as such, I will now focus on just two issues that I did personally observe. First, the Philadelphia Board of Elections processed hundreds of thousands of mail-in ballots with zero civilian oversight or observation. The mail-in ballots were handled, processed, opened, and counted in Hall F of the convention center. Hall F is a vast room, approximately 350 feet by 350 feet. That's about 120,000 square feet. The Board of Elections erected a fence approximately 50 feet into the hall that ran the length of the room. All observers were corralled behind the fence. More than 100 board workers were, workers processed and opened mail-in ballots on the other side of the fence. These masked workers were arranged throughout the 120,000 square feet at a distance from the observers of about 10 feet to more than 200 feet away from us. Unlike what some may have reported in the media, the vast majority, and I'd estimate it at at least 96% of the board workers were processing mail-in ballots 15 to 200-plus feet from us. Due to the distance of the workers from the erected fences, it was impossible for me or any observer to see what the workers were doing with any type of specificity. The observers were not able to challenge any decision or determination being made about the processing of these mail-in ballots. No civilian oversight over hundreds of thousands of mail-in ballots, zero opportunity for observers to observe, challenge, or inspect the mail-ins being opened. I find this to be an issue and to be irregular. Move on to the second point. The pink highlighted duplicate ballots, which I haven't heard about, at least not in the media. As the weeks progressed, the observers were informed that the board was going to be duplicating damaged mail-in ballots that could not be read by the scanners. I was told that there were more than 5,000 of these damaged ballots. I was also told that the actual number was unknown and could be much higher. The process for duplicating these ballots was for two workers to work as a pair. One worker reading out loud what was marked on the original damaged ballot, and the second worker using a pink highlighter to mark the choice on the duplicate ballot. The board's plan, then, was to run the pink highlighted ballots through the scanners where they would be counted as votes. The board workers did this pink highlighter duplication work over the course of a couple days, until thousands of ballots were duplicated with these pink highlighters. On Thursday, November 12th, the observers were informed that the pink highlighter could not be read by the scanners. They all had to be done again. All of the duplicated mail-in ballots had to be fixed, and the Philadelphia Board of Elections' solution to this problem was to give the workers, who were working alone, individually stacks of hundreds of what amounted to blank mail-in ballots. And the workers individually were to fill in the correct highlighted ovals with dark pen, no observation. They were marking thousands of blank mail-in ballots. The workers did this double recreation work for hours before the observers realized what was going on, because we weren't told what was going on. Only when the observers confronted the deputy commissioner about this irregularity was a system setup where the workers would show the observers each double recreated mail-in ballot by flashing it at them for a second, from a distance of 6 to 20 feet away, for as good as that was. Thousands of mail-in ballots were ultimately counted in this way. Again, I find this to be an issue and to be irregular. As Senator Mastriano recently said, "Elections are a fundamental principle of our democracy." Unfortunately, Pennsylvanians have lost faith in the electoral system," end quote. And let me add a quote that Philadelphia City Commissioner of Elections, Al Schmidt, just made, when he said that, when he said about these recent elections in Philadelphia, that these were the most secure and transparent elections in Philadelphia's history," end quote. Now, I wasn't around for every election in Philadelphia's history, but I can tell you as an eyewitness, for 10 days, for more than 80 hours, what I saw was not a secure and transparent election. There are major concerns about the legitimacy of hundreds of thousands of ballots that were counted in Philadelphia. Excuse me. All right. Let me finish with this. May I suggest to you that any restoration of faith on the part of Pennsylvanians in our electoral system can and will only be accomplished after an investigation into this election, only after the law is properly applied to this election. The idea that we can just move on by making sure that the law is properly applied in the next election is, in my opinion, unacceptable. The issues, irregularities, and illegitimacy of what I saw leads me to conclude that the laws of the Commonwealth and of the United States were not being followed in Philadelphia when hundreds of thousands of ballots were counted in this year's general election. Action must be taken now to maintain our free and fair elections, and to preserve and protect our elections' integrity. I look forward to answering any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Peterson, and I appreciate that I'm here today. Thank you all for having me here today. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and I am here to tell you what I witnessed as a canvasser, where the warehouse where they open the mail-in ballots and separate them from the envelopes, as we've been discussing. As the afternoon of Election Day, I went to the, down to the warehouse to be a canvasser to, as a Republican representative, to be able to watch them open the mail-in ballots. And as the gentleman Justin just described, we, as I was led back to the area where we were able to view them opening the mail-in ballots, we were kept in a corral that was at least 15 to 20 feet from any of the representatives, and that was the closest people opening the ballots. There were people that were, you know, 50, 100 feet from us. The closest that was 20 feet about, and you could not see at all the envelope, the ballot itself, where they were stacking them, anything that was required that we were able to be able to see. There were also monitors up around the area. The monitors were pathetic, to be honest. You, they were fuzzy, looked like they were using old technology as far as, I mean, we have the most clearest televisions created, you know, in the world now, and these were, you know, probably from the 60s. You're looking at all these multiple cameras, screenshots put together of people opening ballots, but you could not even see at all, or witness anything, if anything was any misdoing or anything going wrong. It was very discouraging on my part. I was very much looking forward to being a part of, of that, that day, and representing, representing myself and Pennsylvanians in a fair election. And I was, I guess discouraged about it. I love this country, and I love Pennsylvania. I was not born and raised in Pennsylvania, but I have been here for 30 years, and it is very important to me that this election be fair, and thank you again for having me.
First and foremost, excuse me, my name is Leah Hopes. I'm from Delaware County, Pennsylvania. I was a poll watcher on the day of election, and I was also present at the Counting Center in Chester, Pennsylvania. So first and foremost, thank you to this committee and all those involved, and especially Senator Mastriano and former Mayor Rudy Giuliani. To our fearless and brave president, thank you for being our shield and putting us first, and I am forever grateful. It is an absolute honor to be a part of this hearing and to finally have an opportunity to speak about what took place in Delaware County, Pennsylvania. I feel as an American that it is my duty to help protect the integrity of our elections, not just for me, but for every American. There are many who have lost life and limb for my There are many who have lost life and limb for my right to vote. I want to give a brief introduction and history of how I got involved in this election. Four years ago, Donald Trump came down an escalator, and I knew that he was here to take back our country. I was born and raised in Delaware County in a conservative home. I was taught from an early age to love thy neighbor, defend your country, and by all means, always speak the truth. I took those values throughout my life and applied them in every avenue possible, which brings me up to the present. And about 18 months ago, I became a volunteer and assisted with a campaign for a magisterial judge. In that process, I was approached by my current chairman and became an appointed committee woman for the Battle Township Republican Party. In conjunction with my committee position, I also started volunteering for the Trump campaign, registering voters, and assisting with events. During this time, I started a watchdog group and reached out to the Thomas More Society. Now associates, we've been focusing our efforts in election integrity. Our greatest efforts have been in following closely the newly elected and completely Democrat-run Delaware County Council and the Democrat Majority Election Board. This also includes any and all contractors, support staff, and any key players involved. What we found was actually concerning. Not only was private grant money used from the Center for Tech and Life owned by Google and Mark Zuckerberg, but pop-up voter sites were also approved. These pop-up voter sites were placed in heavily Democrat cities, including Chester and Upper Darby, Pennsylvania, in which case the grant money from the CTCL was used to pay for electioneering. It was literally a one-stop shop. Walk in, apply, get your ballots, submit, and you were out the door. But where this didn't take place was in heavily Republican and independent areas. Let's also make note that the Voting Machine Warehouse Supervisor is a Bernie Sanders delegate, who was also solely responsible for every scanner, machine, V-card, and all machines with absolutely zero experience in this area. The real story is $2.1 million spent to move the Counting Center from the courthouse in Media, Pennsylvania to the Okay. Sorry. Sorry, I forgot where I was. Okay, so the real story is the $2.1 million spent to move the Counting Center from the courthouse in Media, Pennsylvania, which has been something that has been done for decades, to the Wharf in Chester, Pennsylvania. Let me explain to you the layout of the Counting Center. It is in the middle of a huge parking lot, which sits back on Seaport Drive next to loading docks. It has multimillion-dollar connections to the company Power HRG and Subaru Park Soccer Stadium. The Counting Center was on the first floor, in which there were multiple places to bring in ballots in and out of, elevators in many rooms in which workers had access. I was there for three straight days. What became of concern was the back room, which had no observers, no line of sight or transparency into the process. There was no cooperation, complete resistance from election night and every day after. It took until our lawyer got an injunction to get into that back room in which pre-campancing was transpiring. Even with an injunction, which was a joke, we were granted five minutes every two hours, and the setup was sitting in a chair 20 feet from any physical ballot. I truly wish I had enough time today to recreate what I witnessed and felt during those moments, but we did not gather here today just for me and my experience, but rather a collection of experiences from Americans like myself. What I hope to achieve is for the public to understand is that we have stuck our necks out, have been intimidated, threatened, bullied, have spent countless hours away from our families, friends, and jobs. We have signed affidavits under penalty of perjury, which should be consideration enough to know that this is a very serious issue. I'm here for one thing only, and that is to speak the truth. This is not about party. This is about my country. Every American deserves transparency, truth, and be able to question those in power without fear of intimidation, bullying, or backlash. I hope this committee takes action if needed, and justice will be swift to anyone involved in fraudulent activity. The Republic is angry, disgruntled, tired, beaten up, and ready to defend this country. Thank you. Without election integrity, we are just another banana republic. I thank you again for your time, efforts, and service, and it is an honor to be here and to be part of a historical moment. Thank you.
Tough group to follow. My name is Gregory Stenstrom. I'm from Delaware County. I'm a father, a family man. I was a former commanding officer and executive officer in the Navy. I'm a veteran of foreign wars. I'm a CEO of my own private company. I'm a data scientist. I'm a forensic computer scientist. I'm an expert in security and fraud. Leah had recruited me for this election, and I was glad, I thank you for that. So for the first part of the day, I was a poll watcher in the city of Chester, and I was with just another former U.S. Marine officer, and the two of us were the only GOP poll watchers in the city of Chester, which is about 40,000 people. Because of the consolidation for COVID, there were seven polls we were allowed, you know, that we were able to make it to in 22 precincts. What we saw out there was pretty orderly and exciting. People were excited to vote. One of the things we saw out in the field was that people, quite a few people had done mail-in ballots, so they came in and they hadn't been updated in the Delaware County database yet. So they would come in and say, you know, the database is not showing me on the database. I'd like to vote. So the process, one of the processes, was to give them a provisional ballot, and then they would vote provisionally, and then later on, their vote would be sorted out. That didn't happen. I observed, and the gentleman that was with me observed, seven different polls where the people were given a regular ballot, so they cast a vote and put it in. You know, we let it happen a few times. You know, we didn't jump all over them. You know, happened a couple of times. We went up. In all cases, the election judges were very forthcoming, very polite. They apologized, and they said they couldn't do it. But that somewhat spurred me to go down to the Counting Center, which Leah described. It's on Seaport Ave. It's a remote building, not much around it, and I wanted to take a look. All day long, I had been told that there were 10 to 20 GOP poll watchers down there, and that everything was well in hand, and out of curiosity, I decided to go down. I arrived at 6:00 with four other gentlemen, again, foreign military and some good citizens from Delaware County, and we weren't allowed to get in until 11:00 at night, and we had to get some legal help to get us. So it took five hours to get upstairs. After that, you know, what we saw here is, what I saw is, I really think the crux of this in Delaware County is, as an expert in this, I think it's impossible to verify the validity of about 100,000 to 120,000 votes. Delaware County's got 425,000 registered voters. Approximately 300,000 of them voted. I don't know what the exact number ended up. Mayor Giuliani nailed that number. But of that number, over 100,000 are in question in my mind. What I saw as a forensic expert was an election process that was forensically destructive in the manner it was conducted, with the envelopes being separated from the ballots and gone to the other side of the room. The problem with that from being forensically destructive is that when you go to do a recount, okay, the machines did a pretty good job of recounting, so if I have 120,000 ballots, mail-in ballots at one side of the room, and envelopes at the other side of the room, it's still going to come out 102,000 votes for President, Vice President Biden and 18,000 votes for President Trump. I don't care how many times you recount those votes, you know, ballots are going to come out the same every time. So the notion of a recount in a forensically destructive process is, doesn't work very well. What we saw there, what I saw there was a chain of custody. In all cases, it was broken. It was broken for the mail-in ballots, the Dropbox ballots, the Election Day USB V-card flash drives, in all cases. The chain of custody and the procedures that were defined by the Delaware County Board of Elections and Election Process Review were all, they didn't follow one. I couldn't even redline this multi-page document, because the entire document would be, they didn't follow any of the procedures. So I personally observed USB V cards being uploaded to voting machines by the Voting Machine Warehouse Supervisor on multiple occasions. I saw this personally. I brought it to the attention of the deputy sheriff, who was there stationed, who was a senior law enforcement officer, and I brought it to the attention of the clerk of elections. I brought it to their attention. I objected, and I said, "This person is not being observed. He's not part of the process that I can see, and he's walking in with baggies," which we have pictures of, and that was submitted in our affidavits, "and he was sticking these USBs into the machines." So I personally witnessed over that, that happened 24 times, over 24 times. We have multiple other witnesses to start, including Democrat poll watchers, and we were told, I was told the next day by the solicitors, well, actually not the solicitor, but the attorney that we had secured, that they said every election, they leave a couple of USBs in the voting machines, and they're brought back, and generally, the warehouse manager comes over and puts them in. So in talking to the U.S. Attorney General McSwain and other law enforcement officers, I found out that was not the case, that generally, you know, more than, more than two is unusual. So they denied they did it, but as of today, 47 USB V cards are missing, and they're nowhere to be found. So I was told personally that these 32, these 24 to 30 cards that were uploaded weren't there. Those cards, I demanded that the, they didn't update the vote live time. They only updated it about once every two or three hours. I demanded they updated the vote so I could see what the, what the, what the result was, and it was 50,000 votes. And I think as a computer scientist and an American and a patriot, it doesn't matter who those 50,000 votes were. I'll tell you, they were for Vice President Biden, but what was shocking to me as an American, as someone who has gone to sea, gone to war, that that could even happen. So several other things that came up was, on Thursday, it took us three days for them to obey the court order that I secured with Leah's help and the help of the Thomas More Society, who we thank incredibly good patriots. They, they got us in there. They got the order for us to get in and watch, look at the back offices, which were locked for five minutes every two hours. I went in, I was the first one allowed to go in at 1:30 on Thursday, and then again at 3:30 for five minutes. The county solicitor had a stopwatch. On the first time, I was not allowed to touch anything. The second time, I did. What I observed in the locked room in the back office was 70,000 unopened mail-in ballots. They were in boxes of 500, stacked in neatly. The gentleman that came in with me is a, was a Democrat poll watcher, is a forensic pathologist, a very detailed, very dedicated man, and he took meticulous notes as well, and I verified with him, are you seeing what I'm seeing? We both agreed as GOP poll watchers and a Democrat poll watcher that we had witnessed 70, 60 to 70,000. We had a little bit of a disagreement there. The problem with that was by that time, the mail-in ballots had already been counted. So 120,000 mail-in ballots had already been counted, posted, and done. So my question is, where did the 70,000 ballots go? And nobody knows. We have a picture in here of a large number of boxes that I took that were filled with what appeared to be ballots, sitting by the Bluecrest machine. They were there for about three hours, and then they disappeared. I found it notable when I watched it, the first, when they were taking the ballots up and down, I said, "I am an expert in fraud." I saw the ballots going up multiple elevators and racks, and I think a lot of well-meaning people and a lot of honest people were there doing that. They were trying to participate in the process, and I would say that 99% of the people there, the way the process was designed, I believe that people thought it was a non-fraudulent process. I heard that said many times. I was, you know, I said, "There's no fraud going on here." I said, "Well, I'm not," you know, I didn't even bring that up, but I think people saw what they wanted to see, and they saw what was intended for them to see. I called it at one point Kabuki Theater. I said it was all designed for us to see it. It was entertaining. There were cameras on it. When we finally got into the back room where the votes were being ingested, as a data scientist, I want to see where, where the data's coming in, and I wanted to know the universe of the votes. Well, the universe of the votes was only supposed to be 120,000 mail-in ballots. We were told there were 6,000 ballots remaining, so I said, "Okay, we have a universe of 126,000 votes." And then when I get back there, the universe wasn't 126,000 votes. The universe was 200,000 votes. So that's a problem. I think the last thing I wanted, a couple of other things, is the Bluecrest sorter machine was only manned by one person. You know, people ask me all the time, "How do people commit crimes?" I know there's a lot of theories here, and I always look for the simplest thing. People, stuff that, you know, sticking USB sticks in, putting ballots in, very simple thing, only takes a couple of people, doesn't take a big conspiracy. I think people look at things and they use inflammatory words, and, you know, like fraud and so forth. As a forensic computer scientist, my interest is in the data. Where did it go? Where did the spoilers go? How did the data come in and go out of the system? So I think as a scientist, we need to look at that. We need to audit that. What was really upsetting to me, and the most upsetting, was I had spoke to multiple law enforcement agencies and literally begged multiple law enforcement agencies, they said, "Go in." And it's in order to prove, you know, prove that nothing's happening, you need to exonerate yourselves in the process or refute what I'm saying. Please, it's a very simple process. Just go get the forensic evidence from the computers. It's a simple process. You take the, you turn the computer off. It's non-destructive, takes moments, maybe half an hour, 20 minutes to do it properly and collect the evidence. You open the computer up. You take a device called a bit blocker. You put it in the hard drive. It's done under the observation of law enforcement officers. They take a forensic image of the drive, put it all back together. It wouldn't have taken more than an hour to image all five machines. That was never done, despite my objections, and that was three weeks ago. Lastly, when they said, they said, "Well, we've got all the forensic records and so forth." We just learned two days ago that virtually all chain of custody logs, records, yellow sheets, everything was gone. All forensic evidence, all custody sheets in Delaware County are gone. They had a signing party where they sat down, and poll workers were invited back to recreate those logs, and our understanding as of today was that they were unsuccessful in getting them all. So we have a situation where we have 100,000 ballots to 120,000 ballots, both mail-in and USB, they're in question. Now, there's no cure for this. There's no remedy for this. As a home, as a home charter, we can, we could have a reelection in Delaware County for our own representatives within our own town, but there is no cure for that for the President of the United States. And I don't believe as a citizen and an observer to this that anybody could certify that vote in any good conscience. And if the Democrats that have a part of this process, you know, were so, you know, had done things, followed their own procedures, which they created almost unilaterally, we would be in a situation where they could exonerate themselves, and they could say, "Mr. Stenstrom, you've been misinformed. We have evidence here that refutes what you say." But that's not the case. They can't do that. So I say, if you can't certify that vote, and you can't certify 100,000 votes out of 300,000, then you can't certify Delaware County. And I'm done, and thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you all. To this panel, before I have Senator Mastriano introduce the next 15-minute panel, I want to note that we've also been joined on Zoom by Representative Kathy Rapp from Northwestern Pennsylvania. Doug?
Thank you, panelists. If you can stay in the area, we're going to bring up the next group here. We're going to save questions and answers for the end. Mr. Mayor, I understand my list might not be synchronized. I'm going to ask you to introduce the next folks coming up to testify. If you could pass the mic to the mayor, somebody. Thank you all.
We could call up four, four more witnesses like this, or we could now put on the statistical expert who could explain some of this, and then put on the additional witness, either way you prefer. Okay, then we'll call, we'll call Colonel Waldron. And if you don't mind, if, if I can interrupt and ask him a few questions, can probably get it directed. It's good for me to do that because I don't understand it, so. I'm only kidding. Colonel, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Senator, Colonel, and gentlemen, ladies. My name is Phil Waldron. I'm a retired Army colonel, 30 years. Spent the first half of my career, just like Colonel Mastriano here, as a cavalry officer conducting armed reconnaissance, counter reconnaissance. Last half of my career spent in information warfare, as a, as a psychological operations officer and information operations officer, conducted computer network operations, electronic warfare, special electronic warfare, deception, counterdeception, and OPSEC, and a couple of other specialties.
Sir, sorry.
Still got his stats in his purse. So I spent most of my, all of my time as an operations officer. My perspective looking at this, this problem set is how to break in, how to break it, how to destroy it, how to manipulate it. And my team has been researching this specific issue since August, but we're working with another team that's been intently working on this problem set, the voting machine manipulation for two years, since the Ted Cruz and Beto race in Texas in 2018, and the Kentucky governor's race, where there were significant anomalies observed. And I'd like to add that there are many, many more teams like ours, small, small teams that are joined in this fight, and they're throwing the flag left and right. So there's, there's a lot of folks who recognize the anomalies. The voting systems in the U.S. and in Pennsylvania were built to be manipulated. They've been used in elections around the world, and stolen elections around the world in Venezuela, Italy, Argentina, Singapore, Bolivia, as close as two weeks ago. Philadelphia uses ESNS, Pittsburgh uses Dominion, other counties in Pennsylvania use Dominion and other systems. So what's, what's the real deal? So all of these election systems have a, a common DNA. SGO Smartmatic sold Sequoia Voting Systems to Dominion in 2010, and then the D-Bol company spun off Premier Election Systems to Dominion as a result of an antitrust suit. So the bottom line is that these systems have similar code and similar functions. And just so you know, I know there have been statements to the contrary, but I personally debriefed the son of a Cuban intelligence officer who had firsthand knowledge of Hugo Chavez's family members, who told him not to worry about the populist threat against Maduro's election in Venezuela, quote unquote, that it was guaranteed. Their father invested the money to build the SGO voting machine system. So I have no reason to doubt this gentleman. He's sworn an affidavit to this effect. But that's, that's the root of the, the SGO voting machines. So these systems are not what you've been told. They are connected to the internet and servers outside of the U.S. They're connected from top to the bottom and the middle. There is no transparency, as, as our previous witnesses men, mentioned, as to how the voter information is processed, how and where it's stored. The voting record is able to be modified and/or deleted by operators, administrators, and outside threats. Operators can assign votes for write-in ballots, blank ballots, or error ballots in large numbers so that they can be directed toward one candidate or another at the operators' or supervisors' discretion. And many experts have published how easily these machines can be hacked to manipulate votes. As a matter of fact, one of our white hat hackers previously discovered a malware that's present on the servers that captures every login and every password of every operator down to the precinct level that logs into one of these systems. It's just like giving your, the password to your bank account, out, putting it on the dark web. It's not going to be there very long. And just so you, you probably are all aware, on 30 September, an election storage facility was robbed in your state. 30 USB devices were stolen and a laptop. Those, those USB devices more than likely had encryption devices, and you've just heard another previous witness talk about the, the, the non-standard use of, of the USB storage devices. So these systems, in a nutshell, allow authorized and unauthorized users to cancel votes, shift votes, preload votes, vote blank ballots, all in real time and in large numbers. They're connected from the top to the bottom. So one bad actor or a team of bad actors can have equally negative inputs. It's been described by a, another person in another state that we're working with, just like the Lotto. Whoever, whoever organizes the Lotto is always going to win. It's controlling the numbers, and it's controlling the margins. Our experts and other academics believe that up to 1.2 million Pennsylvania votes could have been altered or fraudulent. This is what we discovered in the last 22 days. Really only a detailed forensic analysis of the actual machines and software will truly show how many Pennsylvania citizens have had their civil rights violated. So to use these type of machines with little or no audit trails, little or no transparency of how the votes are processed, where they go, where they're stored, will never leave the public satisfied that we truly have a representative democracy. I'd like to correct something the mayor said. I am not a statistician. I'm a, I'm a combat officer and I didn't do well in math. But I, I can understand the numbers that, that he put out earlier. Want to, want to share with you one chart. I believe it's in your, in your package. So what our team has, has done is focused on the spike anomalies, and these are events where a numerical amount of votes are processed in a time period that's not feasible or mechanically possible under normal circumstances. I believe that Greg Stenstrom mentioned earlier, the processing of these ballots through machines. There's a manufacturer-specified rate of speed that a number of ballots can image, be imaged and processed. Those, these spike anomalies in this chart really show where, where for us to look forensically to actually determine what happened with these votes. Our team has, has looked at, at these systems, and there are a dozen ways to, to interdict the voting process in the issue, whether, whether it's mail-in ballot manipulations. They, they can scan and allocate votes, blank votes, whether it was a 70,000 votes left in the back room. There's, there's just lots of ways to interdict these, these systems. So with that, I'll answer any potential questions.
Thank you. Next panel, please.
Could I just, yes, sir. Ask him to clarify one or two things. When we look at this Pennsylvania fixing the vote chart that they all have, could you explain at the very beginning what that line means, Biden injection?
So at the very, the very beginning of the, the chart, where there's a circle that says on Election Day, what that indicates is there is a spike in loaded votes, 337,000 plus or minus of some votes that were added in there in one big batch. So that was an anomaly in the reporting. Normally, you would expect to see a smooth curve going up, not any, not any big, big spikes. That's kind of what, what Greg was talking about, the, the anomalies of loading and uploading those, those votes. So that big spike that occurs there is a prime indicator of fraudulent voting.
And that's 604,000 votes in 90 minutes? Is that right?
Correct. This is 300 and 337 votes, 337,000 votes in that.
In that period of time?
Yes.
And when you look at this entire curve with all these spikes, can you calculate how, how much of a vote that accounted for for Biden and how much for Trump?
Close to 600,000. I think our, our figures were about 570-some-odd thousand that all those spikes represented over time.
For Biden?
Correct.
And how much for Trump?
I think it was a little over 3,200.
Now, just, just to go back to your original, your original document, this one pager that they all have. Mail-in ballots counted without being observed. Those are the ballots we were talking about that were not observed in Allegheny County and in, and in, and in Philadelphia.
Correct.
Is that right? 682,770. Now, this is the part that is a mystery. Mailed ballots sent out, 1,823,148. But when you go to the count of the final count of the vote, there were 2,589,242 mail-in ballots. What, what happened? How, how do, how do you account for the 700,000 mail-in ballots that appeared from nowhere?
So our, our cyber team uses white hat hacking techniques. They gather a lot of public, publicly available information, and that information was from the Secretary of State's website. That website has been updated as late as 11:16 this morning with provisional and mail-in ballots. So those numbers are still changing. They changed last night, so it's a continual target.
This is 22 days after the election?
That, that number, the two-point, the 2.5 million number is, is no longer on the website.
Just been taken off?
It's not there anymore.
Is there any explanation for why it's been taken off?
There is no annotation.
But the, has, has there been a change made in the 2,589,242 mail-in votes that have been counted in the total vote?
I'd, I'd have to check the Secretary of State's website as of.
And could you also check and see, have, is there any change in the 1,823,148 ballots that were sent out?
The mailed out ballots number seems to be holding steady.
And was there any other method of producing ballots now, other than sending them out?
Not that we're aware of unless as previous witnesses have testified that the potential for multiple ballot counts. So ballots could have been.
And have you ever gotten a chance to examine any of these ballots?
No, that's a, that would be part of the forensic process. One suggestion, whoever does the analysis is using paper and ink analysis, a micro photo spectrometer. That would analyze the, the ink on those ballots to see if they were mass-produced.
So in addition to the 682,770 ballots that were entered without a single inspection of any kind, there also appear to be something like 700,000 ballots, mail-in ballots, that were never sent out, that were counted.
There, there are noted discrepancies in the, in the.
That's a pretty big discrepancy.
Yes, sir.
And that's been there.
Thank you. We do have to press on to the next panel, since we have a lot of questions about pending here. Mr. Mayor, could you introduce the next panelists?
So now we have Jane Winters, Gary Feldman, who's going to be on a Zoom. Is he here? Well, then have him go.
Please, please come up as you call.
I believe Charles Nudo, N-U-D-O, and David Shostakis. Think I have them all. Think I have them all. Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen. We'll, we'll start with the, the men physically in, in the room here with your testimony, and then go to the Zoom after that. So please.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Gary Feldman. I am a resident and voter and of Philadelphia, city and county. I'm registered as a Republican. I have been involved with Philadelphia Republican politics for over 20 years now. I've had watcher certificates, and on this past November 3, 2020, I was issued a watcher certificate to be the watcher for President Donald Trump. This is the watcher certificate that I was given, and it is issued for President Donald Trump to me. These watcher certificates, I'm not sure of the exact year. I'm going to say about 2002 or 2003 are now for countywide. So everywhere in the county, the watcher certificate is good for. So it's Philadelphia, it's city and county. So this watcher certificate, which reads, this, this certificate authorized the individual to watch in any ward or division in Philadelphia. And that's what the, the, like the top line. If you want to see the watcher certificate, gladly bring it up. So anyway, I was in my vehicle as a, kind of like volunteering for the president with a, an attorney, and we were, he was monitoring any kind of problems that could happen in Philadelphia. His name was Will Chamberlain, and he was pretty good on Twitter and other social media stuff. So we got a word that they were not letting Republican watchers in the polling places in South Philly. So we went to a place, which happened to be a funeral parlor, where they were doing the election, and I walked in with, with the watcher certificate in both hands to make sure that they wouldn't snag it out of my hand. They immediately identif, wanted me to identify myself. One of the problems that happens is the Republican watcher certificates are this gold-orange color, where the Democrats are like a light blue. I don't, I've never really seen one, but I heard they're light blue. So they know right away that we're Republicans coming in there to watch. So two, two poll workers, I don't know who they were, they were wearing masks and everything. I produced a certificate, and she starts saying, it's not good here. And I'm like, it is. And I said, please read the top line. The gentleman that was with her said, would you let you go outside and talk about this? You know, I was not looking for a confrontation. I, they, and the other thing is too, is I did have my bandana on. They had their face shield, but they weren't practicing face, social distancing. They were right on top of me. So we did step outside because he wanted to step outside. Will Chamberlain is not a Philadelphia resident, so he's not issued a Philadelphia watcher certificate. And he proceeded to take a video of me having a confrontation on the street with these two, I don't know who they were. I don't know if they were poll workers, you know, I, they never identified who they were. And the video, which was released to the public, was a little over 30 seconds on Twitter, and it already has 3.8 million hits on Will, Will's Twitter page. There is a complete video, and it's on my phone, and I know I, I did give it, made it available to the senators. It's over a minute about what happened on the street. I tried to explain, this watcher certificate is for the city of Philadelphia. You're in the city of Philadelphia, and you have to let me observe. I'm the eyes and ears of the President of the United States, and they wanted to allow
Thank you for the opportunity to be, excuse me, be here today. Oh, sir.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to add another thing that's really kind of crucial. When this happened, the fact-checkers group, organization, I don't even know what they are, started to put disclaimers on my, the video. Fact-checkers said they contacted me. Fact-checkers never contacted me. Fact-checkers said that it was a misunderstanding. They said the Commissioner's Office tried contacting me. They used the name Kevin Feely from the Commissioner's Office. I don't know who Kevin Feely is. Nobody from the, nobody from fact-checkers called me. I don't even know if they have my phone number. And the Commissioner's Office did nothing to follow up on any of this. I did see Commissioner Al Schmidt when we were doing the canvassing, but we didn't mention anything about what happened that day. anything about what happened that day.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Shostakis. I'm an attorney, licensed practice law in Illinois and Florida. Some time ago, I was a Cook County Assistant State's Attorney Prosecutor, and during that time, I actually did election law enforcement during the course of that time, including seeing to it that people had appropriate access. Recent openings and closings of machines were zeroed out. Since that time, I've either been a candidate or campaigned in over 10 other, 10 other individual elections. And in 2016, I actually worked for, as a volunteer for the Trump Rubio campaign in Broward County, Florida, discovered them opening mail-in ballots in a locked room. Before that was all said and done, we actually had a Broward County judge monitoring everybody's access. He was actually onsite monitoring everybody's access to see to it that that could happen, issue to it that everybody would have appropriate access. Currently, I am lead counsel in conjunction with Judicial Watch in a suit called Illinois Conservative Union versus the Illinois State Board of Elections for violations of the board in terms of the National Voter Registration Act. I, given that kind of background, can give you some idea of where I'm coming from on, on, on this subject. On October 24th this year, I came to Pittsburgh as a volunteer with Lawyers for Trump, and I was asked to organize folks to do monitoring of the pre-canvas, pre-canvas activities during the course of the next week about myself with some other volunteers, made over 500 phone calls. We recruited 50 individuals that were willing to come and canvass, or come and monitor the pre-canvas, and along with 25 other out-of-state lawyer volunteers. We had organized all this because, of course, we had 19, in, in the, in Allegheny County, there were 19 Republicans on the ballot, and so we were able to have credentials through the RCAC for 19 watchers at any given moment. So we had to organize them. So we organized everybody during the course of time, and they had given us credentials in advance. And then two days before the election, on, well, the Friday before the election, we got a call from the Electoral Board and said, "Oh, by the way, you need to submit everybody's credentials in advance, and you need to have everybody's signatures on the credentials that you sign in advance." And of course, we'd already had, put together a team of 70. We'd allocated them four hours, four hours of time, over, in four-hour shifts to be able to monitor through the course of the whole period of time. And then over the next three days, we scrambled like heck to try and get signatures from the various volunteers and other, other counsel that were assisting us. Needless to say, we lost about 20, 25 folks that we were unable to get the credentials to in advance, and get the signatures back and forth, and all the things necessary to do that. So I just, I wanted to mention that you're hearing about global, huge global issues, but it goes down to the petty as well. It goes down to the petty as well in terms of interfering with his, his, his access and interfering with changing rules. I know Secretary Booker changed some huge rules, but the local boards, day in and day out, were changing rules as well to make, make the monitoring process next to, next to impossible. At any rate, we, we did that, and then we wound up, I went with a group at about 6:45 on Election Day to 901 Pennsylvania Avenue in Allegheny, Allegheny County, where they were doing the pre-canvas. And at the, at the time when, when we arrived, we were herded into what's best known as the corral. I'm sure you've kind of seen or heard about those things. It was a fenced-in area that was about, the fence was maybe two and a half, three feet high. Closest anybody could get would to any, make any observations was maybe 15, 20 feet from the closest, closest ballot processor to the, maybe 150 feet, because we were in about a 20,000 square foot area where the biggest room was taking place. Biggest activity was taking place. But I would mention that the mail-in ballots were coming into that room already sliced open at the top. We have no idea when or where the slicing took place, where the opening took place, or what was it in fact in, inside those ballots, inside those mail-in envelopes. At that point in time, folks were then separating the mail-in ballot from the secrecy envelope. You could see that, you know, that's exactly what they're doing. They put one on the side and one on the other side. And then, then they take them and put them, put them someplace, and I have no idea. And then the secrecy envelopes would go to another slicing machine, and that'd be sliced open. And at that point, then the ballots would come back and they'd be divided from the secrecy envelopes. We had really no, no concept of what was going on. In the room next door, there was a smaller room around, around the corner that you had to leave, the 20,000 square foot room. It was one of about 7,500 square feet. And in that room, there was a, there was a machine, and the machine would be apparently sorting, sorting things by, by the barcodes. And then eventually, somehow or other, people would come in with big armloads of ballots from the, from the other room. Apparently with no providence, no, no explanation of where they came from. And here's, here's an interesting thing that you guys might consider when, when you're doing this in the future. The biggest, one of the biggest bottlenecks would take place at this point in time because all these ballots came in folded, tri-folded, right? And all the ballots had to be flattened. And so they would take the ballots and put them under big stacks of reams and reams of paper to flatten them out, and then there'd be workers kneading the ballots to try and make them so that they could go through the machines. And when everybody's saying, "Well, you haven't counted anything for, you know, X number of hours," and they say, "Well, we're trying to flatten the ballots." Yeah, no, it just, it was, it was absurd and obscene. So at any rate, that was, when everybody was waiting, that's what was going on. They're flattening, they're flattening the ballots for, for most part. And then, then there was about six machines where they were feeding the ballots. And while they would, had six machines feeding the ballots, as they would go in, two or three would kick out to a different tray than, than the other tray. And workers sometimes would take the ones that weren't kicked out and put them in a, put them in a stack, and then sometimes you'd run all of them through again, and sometimes run two or three. We never had any idea if they were zeroing out a machine, what they were doing. I asked, I asked the solicitor, the county solicitor who was there, I said, "What's, what's going on?" He told me that this was a Pitney Bowes representative working there that had been sworn in as a county representative, and that sometimes the ballot machine doesn't, doesn't count those things, and then so he runs them through and zip. But there was absolutely no providence to what, what was going on in the counting machines. I have no idea, because of course, they would just take stacks of, take stacks of ballots that had been sitting under reams of paper trying to be flattened, and then run them through the machine. So we have no idea about that. And so at one point, I asked the county solicitor. I said, "Can you describe for me the journey of a ballot from the time it hits the door to the time that it's counted? What, where does it go? What's the process, et cetera?" I had a short answer, "No." I then asked him, I said, "Can you give me any written protocol about what is supposed to happen? It, it hits the door, then it, then it goes to a machine theoretically sorted by barcodes, from what I understood from someone else, so that if there's a challenge in advance of the election, they know where to, they know where to look? Because of course, at 5:00 PM on the Friday before elections, you can challenge things for people having died and a few other reasons." And, but then I said, I asked, I said, "Is there any written protocol for that?" And he said, "No. We have no written protocol for what we're, what we're conducting, what we're doing here." So he answered, he's supposed to be the one giving legal advice to people on how to legally handle ballots. And he tells me that he doesn't know how they're handled, and he tells me that there is no written protocol on how they are supposed to be handled. So I might suggest that there was just literally no way to, no way to change. I mean, there was no way to challenge, there was no way to look at those ballots. And I would say, in my experience, electoral experience, one of the, one of the things that legitimizes elections is the ability of an, not a disinterested third party to, to review what the process is, but actually an adversarial third party to review what the, what the process is. And this was completely and utterly absent. I had about 20, 25 other affidavits from other folks that had joined me during, during the time that had been part of this, that described essentially the same thing over there in Allegheny County, most of whom were, most of whom were attorneys and had been versed on the comings and goings of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which I might suggest, ultimately, the last decision in Ray canvassing. When the Pennsylvania Supreme Court ultimately said that it doesn't matter how far you're away from the ballots because you don't have the right to challenge anything anyway. I read the opinion, and I said to myself, "The Pennsylvania Supreme Court just called off elections in the state of Pennsylvania." And I would suggest that the remedy for what the Pennsylvania Supreme Court does lies with the distinguished legislators that are before me. But the fact is, is if there is no, there is no opportunity for anybody to look at them, and the, and the court has the temerity to say, "You, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if you come in or not, it doesn't matter how far you are, because even if you're there, you don't have any right to do anything."
If you could summarize, sir, where we are running.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize for being an attorney. No, I, I, I apologize, Senator. But I just, I, one, yeah, I'll, I'll summarize in one thing. One of the guarantees in the United States Constitution is that, in fact, every state shall have a republican form of government. And I would suggest to, I would suggest to you, if the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania determines that they're going to run the state and allow the local election authorities to essentially appoint winners, the state of Pennsylvania no matter, no longer meets that guarantee as a republican form of government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If we could go to our two witnesses on Zoom now, if you can come forth. And go ahead and start when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Preate Havy. I am an attorney and a resident of Montgomery County and the Chair of the Montgomery County Republican Committee. Thank you, Senators and Mayor Giuliani, for providing me the opportunity to speak. After the primary, our committee prepared and provided to the PA legislative leaders and members of the Montgomery County staff in charge of the election, a 30-page report of the mail-in ballot and election day problems and irregularities we experienced in Montgomery County. We made detailed recommendations for changes with the hope that the general election would be smoother. Unfortunately, that was not the case. There are a number of issues that evidence a total lack of transparency regarding the handling of the general election in Montgomery County. First, the Montgomery County Republican Committee was not provided meaningful view of the mail-in ballots at any time despite our requests. Second, we were not provided with regular detailed information about the mail-in ballots over the course of the election despite our requests. Third, we still lack complete and detailed information about these ballots despite our request. We were provided our first opportunity to view, learn about the canvassing site on Sunday, November 1st, just two days prior to the election. At that visit, the chief operating officer of the county showed us the room where the canvas was to take place. To our shock, we were told we could not directly check the mail-in ballots. After some significant pushback by me, the county agreed to allow two watchers inside the room, but they were never able to see the ballots up close. Again, there was no meaningful observation of the ballots, and absolutely no check of the ballots by anyone other than the county staff, which is all run by the Democrats, as to whether or not these ballots met election code criteria. At the most basic level, we were not even able to check to see if a voter voted twice or if a voter was deceased. And with the removal of the signature being a check for existing voters, there was no way to protect against someone fraudulently voting for a registered voter. In addition to having no meaningful observation or review of over 200,000 mail-in ballots, we were not provided with the change in rules by the county to allow the curing of mail-in ballots in a timely manner. On Thursday, October 29th, I received an email from Frank Dean, who ran the election for the county, with a list of ballots with what they described as defects, and if the voter had been contacted by the county to cure the defect. At the tour of the county, the canvas on November 1st, we were shown bundled mail-in ballots divided by precinct, which the county identified as having a defect, and explained that those individuals had not cured these ballots as of November 1st. The county did not provide the Montgomery County Republican Committee with an opportunity to have an authorized representative present in what was effectively the pre-canvas, a legal term, pre-canvas of the ballots, when it reviewed and contacted voters about their defective mail-in ballots. After immediate investigation, it was clear that other counties across Pennsylvania were not allowing this illegal pre-camvassing to take place. In particular, our neighboring county, Berks County, a county that the president won by over 8%, interpreted the law as written and did not contact voters to cure ballots weeks prior to the election as Montgomery County did. A portion of Berks County and most of Montgomery County share one congressional seat. So voters were not treated equally in these two counties in the same district. Since the election, we have received many calls and emails from Republicans with questions about whether their mail-in ballot was counted, expressing concerns that they didn't request a mail-in ballot but received one anyway, that they were made to vote provisional when they shouldn't have, that they have great concerns about the efficacy of this election. There is a real disenfranchisement of voters across Montgomery County. Many people feel their vote did not count. Because we lack the information we need to tell them otherwise, and because we were not able to have any meaningful check on mail-in ballots, we cannot provide these concerned voters with the assurance they need that the process was fair and that the election was honest. In addition to the lack of transparency we experienced in Montgomery County, the Kathy Barnett for Congress campaign found, with just the minimal information that we've been able to obtain, that at least 188 deceased people in Montgomery County voted in 2020. They also found concerning anomalies in the results. For example, more people voted in the small town of Norristown for the very first time than the voters who vote regularly. This occurrence is far outside the norm of what we have seen in past elections. These numbers must be reviewed and analyzed. In fact, a full review of the mail-in ballots across the state must be done. In order for this country to have trust in the electoral process, elections must be viewed as open and transparent. Both the Democrats and the Republicans should be provided with the same information throughout the process, and there should be meaningful opportunity to observe and object, not last-minute disclosures and rule changes. This legislature must reform the election law to provide for such transparency all along the mail-in ballot process from start to finish. And people need to feel confident that the same rules apply to each and every voter in every town and in every county in this state. Thank you.
Okay, next member on the Zoom. Are you, are you up? Thank you. Do we have contact?
She's still on.
Okay, there you are.
We're ready.
Please proceed.
Julie Vehi.
Oh, no, she's on. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you for having me here today. My name is Julie Vehi, and I'm a resident of Montgomery County and the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Republican Committee. I'm here to speak with you today regarding my experience as an observer of the pre-canvas and canvas of the mail-in ballots. In Montgomery County, we had over 250,000 mail-in ballots requested for the general election. In the weeks leading up to the election, I personally trained over 100 volunteers to inspect and monitor the counting of these ballots to ensure the legitimacy of the vote in Montgomery County. Unfortunately, they were never given this opportunity. On Sun, Sunday, November 1st, during a walkthrough of the mail-in ballot facility, we learned that no watchers were permitted to inspect or even see the outside envelope of the ballot. After some significant pushback by our chairman, Liz Havy, the county agreed to allow two watchers inside the room, of which I was one. As an observer at the canvas, I was corralled into a small, narrow holding area, which is blocked off by tables, plexiglass barriers, in the corner of the room. Due to the room layout and location of the holding area within the room, I only had visibility to the space where ballots were flattened and scanned. This was a huge area, and the closest scanner was roughly six feet away, and the farthest approximately 25 yards away. From my position within the holding area, I had no visibility or access to the room where ballots were sorted, outside envelopes were inspected, and both outside and secrecy envelopes were open. The space was divided from the scanning room by a large white wall. The space was divided from the scanning room by a large white wall, blocking all visibility to the slicing machines, the blue crest sorter, and the ballot storage room. In my opinion, this was a totally separate room and not one room, as the county election board argued. During our walkthrough of the canvas facility on Sunday, November 1st, we argued that this was a separate room and was told by the county Chief Operating Officer that we would be able to view this space by the security camera footage. The footage from these cameras was streamed to televisions in a conference room on the other end of the building, which was approximately a four-minute walk away from where the ballot canvas room was. The system was not set up on our walkthrough day, and it was not until I arrived back at the facility on 7:00 AM on Election Day that I could see the footage was extremely poor quality and you could only see pixelated images of workers moving around the room and had no meaningful visibility of the ballots. Over the last 10 months in my role, I have spoken to thousands of voters firsthand who have lost faith in the election processes and procedures in Montgomery County and across Pennsylvania as a whole. Today, I still lack the information needed to properly inform voters that their vote was in fact counted. I thank you for holding these hearings today and I hope that the appropriate legislative changes are made to restore confidence in our elections. Thank you.
Facts are stubborn things, and I appreciate you guys laying it out there. It doesn't make a difference. Mayor, if you could introduce the final panelists before we get a question and answer time?
I believe there are two other.
Two more on Zoom? Okay, please come forth, friends on Zoom, when you're ready.
Here we are. We're here, but we can't see ourselves. Can you hear us?
We hear you loud and clear. Please begin.
Okay, my name's Charles Nudo. I live in Drums, Pennsylvania. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you see me on the screen?
You're not on the screen.
No, but please continue.
Okay. Go ahead. My mother, no, we got somebody else.
Let's go with what we got. Please start.
Can you see us?
We see two ladies.
Can you see us?
Yes, we have the two ladies.
Barbara Solika. My name is Barbara Solika. I went to the voting polls on November 3rd to vote in person. I waited two hours in line, and when I went in, I showed identification, and I was taken up to the polling place. The polling man showed me what to do, turned it on, and said, go ahead. I voted and I printed it out, and when I got it and I looked at it, Trump was not on there. I voted for Trump and it wasn't there. My daughter, I called her over and I said to her, look, his vote is gone. I voted for him. So I called a pollster over, and he said, it's not supposed to be seen, it's for privacy. Just put it through the scanner and you're done. It bothered me. It's been bothering me since because I voted and was it counted or was it flipped? I don't know.
And I'm speaking on my mom's behalf, also as a witness. My name is Cheryl Nudo. I was there that day. I drove her to the polls. When she got done voting, she showed me the printout, and she was saying how the president's name that she voted for was not printed out when all the other delegates that she had voted for were on the printout. Me not knowing, because I had not voted yet, how the printout was supposed to look, we went to the pollster that was there and asked him why the president and vice president's name did not print out when all the other names of the candidates printed out that my mother had voted for. It seemed very strange, but not knowing any better, we asked, well, what is the next step? And he said, oh, I'm sorry, he said that it did not print out because that's for voters' privacy, that none of them vote, that none of them print out. So we asked him what the next step was, and he said to put it through the scanner. So that's what we did, and we left, and it seemed very odd. Then I went to where I live in Drums, Pennsylvania, which is about 10 miles south of where my mother voted, and I voted, no problem, everything printed out just as, you know, it should, and I scanned it through. So it just seemed very odd, and we wanted to report that, that in my mother's area, which was Fairview Township, it seemed very odd that it did not print out. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Charles Nudo, and by the way, my mother-in-law is 84 years old. She forgot to mention that. Anyway, my wife then, I'm sorry, she's 80. My, my wife called me that day, and she was distraught, and told me everything they just called. So I go to my polling place around 3:30, 4 o'clock here in Drums. And when I first walked in, a young gentleman came up to me, started explaining how to vote, and he said, take the stylist, make your choices, then print it out with a printer that's underneath the machine. And I thought, that's odd, I'd been voting since 1992, we never had a print a ballot. And I actually thought, it was easier to vote in 92 on the World War II surplus voting machines with the curtain. If, did your choices, open the curtain, and they went click and everything went, all of a sudden we have to print a ballot? So anyway, I'm pretty good with computers, I made my choices, I printed it out, all my choices are on there, from president on down ballot. And he said, now you have to put it in the scanner. And he turned over a sample ballot and pointed at a weird triangle in the corner and smiled at me. I didn't know what he meant. So I go over to the scanner, and I'm wondering, well, a scanner works face down when you scan, because I have one at home, so I put it in face down or face up. So he's already across the room talking to another gentleman, that's about 20 years older than me, trying to tell him how to do it. And I said, are these face up or face down? And he just nodded. He didn't say either way, he just nodded yes. So I put it in face up. So I don't even know if it scanned the blank backside or the voting top side. And anyway, I overheard that conversation, not willingly or that I wanted to, a man, I'm 58, he was about 78, saying, oh, they said to him, now do you understand? And he said, yeah, I think, but my memory's not too good. And when I walked out of there, I realized it's total voter suppression. My mother-in-law here did not even get a cell phone till last year, has never sat at a computer and keyed anything in in her life, has no Wi-Fi internet service at her house. Neither does my mother. She has a cell phone, but it's a flip type. And these are the people that went by the thousands or millions to our polls and had to go through this system. And I just wanted to point that out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Mastiano, before we turn to our next panel, I want to note that Senator Cameron Bartolata has joined us from southwestern Pennsylvania on Zoom, and Senator Bob Minch from the southeast.
Thank you, Senator. Can we go over to the final Zoom panelist? Mr. Mayor, we have more? Thank you, Scott.
I think we have a surprise guest, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is it my turn?
Just hold off one second. Just give me a minute.
Okay, it's really hard to hear you guys.
Are we ready, Molly?
Jenna?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, may I introduce?
Let them finish their test while I'm watching. It's fantastic.
You might as well.
Let them finish their test.
He wants to finish.
Okay, okay, please, can you hear me on Zoom? If you can introduce yourself and proceed.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you loud and clear.
Okay, my name is Olivia Jane Winters, and I'm a professional organizer and a business management consultant, and I live in Philadelphia. I actually was asked to be a minority inspector in 3615, that's the ward in the division. I was just purely doing this to help my mom out, she's a ward leader in a different area of the city. I'm actually not a, I'm a registered Democrat, and I just wanted to help and make sure it was a fair election. I don't, I don't care who wins, I care that it's a fair election. I showed up to the polls at 6:30 in the morning. Immediately, I was met with a hostile attitude from all of the people that I had to work with. That would be the majority inspector, the poll watcher, the machine operator, and a committee man who was electioneering in the polls. He was wearing, he was wearing shirts and a hat and a mask for who to vote for. We are about like an hour and a half in, in the morning. We have a long line of people. We must have had, I don't know, 60 people in line in the building, snaking around the building. And a woman came up and said, I'd like to turn in my mail-in ballot so that I can vote in the booth. And the girl who was clerking for me said, well, if you want to turn in your mail-in ballot, we're going to need to have you fill out this form, and the majority inspector is going to need to sign the form. The majority inspector had decided in the middle of the morning to go home and was not in the polling place for over 45 minutes. To my understanding, you as the minority, as, I'm sorry, not the majority inspector, the judge of elections, my apologies, she had gone home. And to my understanding, the judge of elections is not to leave the polling place. So she was out of the building, we needed her to sign this form. The man who was electioneering and was a poll watcher but also a committee man confronted myself and the clerk and said, you don't know what you're talking about, anybody can sign the affidavit, why don't you stop trying to cause problems, why don't you shut up, started getting in my face, cursing at me, telling me that I needed to be quiet, that I didn't know what I was talking about, and I should just learn to sit down and not say anything and just let it happen. And my clerk and I said, no, we're not going to let that happen, that's ridiculous. It says very clearly in our training and on this sheet that an affidavit needs to be signed by the judge of elections if somebody's going to turn in a mail-in ballot before they can go vote in the booth. We made her wait, finally, the judge of elections came back. Not, of course, before he was threatening me, the majority inspector threatened to slap me in the face, and he told me that it was going to become a quote-unquote racial issue. I'm not really sure why that would become a racial issue. It has nothing to do with race, it has everything to do with following procedure and making sure it's an honest election. I felt threatened, I called my ward leader, the ward leader then called the Commissioner for Philadelphia, Al Schmidt. Al Schmidt had me call and report that to the DA. And then about an hour and a half after that, the majority inspector told me that she wanted to vote because we had a lull in people coming to the polls, so it was pretty quiet. And I looked her name up so that she could sign the book, and it said that she needed to remit her mail-in ballot or vote provisionally. She said, oh, I threw that in the trash. And I said, well, then you have to vote provisionally. And the machine operator and the same committee man slash poll watcher who was electioneering that I mentioned before, got up in my face again, told me that I didn't belong there, that I needed to shut up, started cursing expletives at me again, told me that they were going to allow her to do that, and that I better be quiet about it. And then they let her go into the polls and vote, and she did not vote provisionally at all. She voted, and who knows, maybe she voted twice. Not to mention, it wasn't until I had actually called our ward leader, who had called the commissioner, who had called the DA, that they then sent representatives down to discuss this with me and defend me. I mean, I had maybe six men there because I was being threatened in the polling place. And his, the committee man that I mentioned earlier, who was threatening me, then got his cousin involved, who was working the polls as a poll watcher and was also wearing electioneering gear. She got up in my face, demanded to see my credentials, then refused, tried to refuse to give them back to me, told me that they were illegitimate minority inspector certificates. They basically told me they were going to call my council rep, and he was going to come down and make me leave. I just ridiculous threats. I've been testified in a hearing for the City of Philadelphia for them on the same, on Election Day regarding this harassment. And meanwhile, I have mentioned that until we had the deputy sheriff come down and tell us how to actually receive a mail-in ballot and how to vote provisionally, we were not doing it correctly. The judge of elections was not doing it correctly. And I cannot stress this enough, my brother had the same role as me as a minority inspector in a different polling place, and he said they were not doing it correctly either. I don't think that anybody actually really knew how to receive a mail-in ballot. Most of the books that we had to, to get your authorized signature, some would have a remit ballot little box that you could click, and others didn't have that at all. So if somebody came in and remitted a ballot, I'd almost have to like hand-write that in just to keep it as honest as possible. There was no place for that. So I don't see really how they were keeping track of that, because you could easily, you could easily do both. And I mean, it happened in front of me. My majority inspector definitely voted and then went into the polls and voted again. And I, unless you have questions, I'm not really sure. I think that's pretty much what happened.
Thank you very much. Senator Mastiano?
Thank you. If we can have our final Zoom, I guess one or two more, if the next one can come forth. Whenever you're ready. Okay, are you on? Hello? Can you hear me?
Hello.
Okay, over to you, we can hear you.
Am I on?
Yes, please begin. You have the floor.
This is Gloria Lee Snover. I am Chairman of the Northampton County Republican Committee. Northampton County is a Democrat county where Republicans win elections. I have been involved in the political process of Northampton County for more than 25 years. I've worked on campaigns from Township Supervisor to President of the United States. This year was one of the most vast, complex elections I have ever had to oversee as party county chairman. The complexity was due to the new mail-in ballot system and ever-changing rules. The unmanned drop boxes in the general election that we did not have in the primaries, also changing the fact that voters could bring their ballot to the polls and vote on the machine and many other new procedures. There was mass confusion regarding the mail-in ballot system. I fielded scores of calls from Northampton County voters and collected incident reports from voters and poll watchers regarding the November 3rd election. The typical calls I would field were, I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot, why am I on the mail-in ballot list? I did not get my ballot, what should I do? It's been weeks. How come my wife got her ballot and I didn't get one? We applied on the same day. How can I vote on the machines if I applied for a ballot? Is it safe to put my ballot in the mail? My ballot says it wasn't received, and I turned it into the election office in person. My ballot says canceled, what does that mean? I voted in person, and it still says not counted. I've been on hold with the election office 70 minutes, what do I do? In turn, because of these questions, I had a number of phone calls and emails, corresponded with the election office and the county solicitor before Election Day, trying to make sure I was disseminating information correctly to the voters, volunteers, and the campaign. One call turned heated when the registrar threatened to turn me over to the district attorney for posting a picture of a voter ballot harvesting a large bag of ballots at a North at a Northampton County drop box. It was my opinion, the registrar was more concerned we exposed it rather than the fact that it was happening. The most pertinent information I have to offer this committee was my conversation with the election office regarding curing the disqualified naked ballots, which they unlawfully pre-campus before election day. They actually told me on the phone early in October, they felt them, they held them up to the light, they separated them out in different boxes. Reflecting back on these three weeks and the experience, the major concerns regarding this election are equal protection. Were the Democrats and Republicans treated the same? Were they given the same information and opportunity to vote? Did they equally have an opportunity to cure their disqualified ballots? Not in my county. There was no ability to properly witness the canvas of the mail-in ballot or see the actual ballot. Were there signatures? The solicitor told me there is absolutely no law that allows us to see the counting or to see the ballot. To this day, we have no idea what or whose ballots were counted. Another one, very strange, there's a pattern of reactivated old voter rolls that kept reoccurring on the SURE system. The SURE system is our Pennsylvania voter system. Scores of people that had not voted since the nineteen ninety, more than twenty-two years ago, were all now reactivated and receiving mail-in ballots. People that didn't vote for Obama or Hillary were all of a sudden receiving mail-in ballots, setting up the opportunity for fraud on a massive scale that would go undetected because voters who never intended to vote would not know. The SURE system is not so sure. We also found in Northampton County more than fifteen hundred votes where the mail-in ballot was received in the election office on a date before it was even mailed. We have a problem with this election. Thank you for allowing me to share my election experience, and I plead with you to remedy the mail-in ballot process. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And, uh, our last Zoom, are you, are you there? Can you hear me? And if so, please begin. Is there one more? Nope, that's, that's it? Okay, I guess a Q and A.
Let me begin now with, uh, questions from our representatives and senators. I believe probably about thirty minutes. Up. We have one additional witness?
Commentator.
Please.
All right. Uh, I will introduce to you now Mr. President. You are connected.
Thank you very much. I've been watching the hearing on OAN and on a couple of other great networks, but, uh, I really appreciate, uh, being asked to speak, and I'm in the Oval Office right now, and it's very interesting to see what's going on. And this was an election that we won easily. We won it by a lot. A big energy, uh, official was on this morning, uh, on a, uh, important show and said, there's no way Trump didn't win Pennsylvania because the energy industry was all for him. Uh, I saw, you know, with, with my eyes what happened, and he told me horror stories, absolute horror stories. So this was a, very sad to say it, this election was rigged, and we can't let that happen. We can't let it happen for our country, and this election has to be turned around because, uh, we won Pennsylvania by a lot, and we won all of these swing states by a lot. Anybody watching television the night of the election was saying, wow, I was called by the biggest political people, congratulations, Sarah, on a big win. And all of a sudden ballots were dumped all over the place, and a lot of horrible things happened. And everybody in that room, I want to thank all of the people that signed affidavits and all of the speakers, you fantastic people, you're great patriots. I want to thank the senators for being there, and, uh, it's so important, day before Thanksgiving, it really represents somebody. Between the voter suppression and all of the horrible things that happened to poll watchers, uh, we have poll watcher affidavits, uh, piled up to the ceiling. They're all over. They were treated horribly all over this, uh, all, all of these swing states. I mean, virtually all of the swing states. And many other things were happening that were horrible, just horrible. But the poll watchers weren't allowed to watch. Uh, they were, in many cases, whisked out of the room, not only into pens that were twenty, thirty, forty, sixty, a hundred feet away, where you couldn't even see. They were using binoculars. People are reporting that they had to use binoculars, and that didn't work. Uh, if you were a Republican poll watcher, you were treated like a dog. And the Democrats had no problem, but they were rough. They were, they were literally, uh, pushed out, and it was rough tactics. This is what, what happened here. This is not the United States of America what happened, and I think everybody knows that. That's why you're there, and that's why you're so vehement about it. Uh, we have many, many cases, many, many cases of people walking in, a, a woman, an elderly woman walks in looking forward to voting November third and says, oh, good, where would I go about voting? I'm sorry, you've already voted. Your ballot is in. I said, no, I didn't vote. I didn't vote. No, your ballot is in, you've already voted. In all cases for Biden, by the way. She said, no, no, I want to vote. Nope, your ballot is in. And then they give her a provisional ballot to sign, which goes nowhere. It's a disgrace that this is happening to our country. We won this election by a lot. We got seventy-four million votes, and if you would have said seventy-four million votes the day before the election, every single professional in the business would have said, there's no way of beating that. We got eleven million votes more than we had four years before in twenty sixteen, and we got many votes more than Ronald Reagan had when he won forty-nine states. And nobody would have said we even had a chance of losing. And all you had to do is take a look at the numbers at ten o'clock in the evening when everybody thought the election was virtually over, and then, uh, very weird things happened. But they're not weird to professionals, and they're not weird to Dominion and other people that operate machines, and they're not weird to the people that handle the ballots where they were flooding the market. People were getting two and three and four ballots in their home. People that were dead were signing up for ballots. Not only were they coming in and putting in a ballot, but dead people were requesting ballots, and they were dead for years, and they were requesting ballot, ballots. And the whole world is watching us. The whole world is watching the United States of America, and we can't let them get away with it. And we have judges that are afraid to make a decision. We have judges that don't want to do the same thing. A very good lawyer said, well, sir, I mean, that's a big statement for a judge to overthrow an election. I said, really? If he got hundreds of thousands of votes more than he was entitled to get through all of the things that I'm listening to right now, and you're just covering a few of them. We have, we have hundreds and hundreds of affidavits of stories that are even worse than the stories I'm hearing. Why wouldn't they overturn an election? Certainly overturn it in your state, because we have other states that are just as bad. If you look at, uh, Michigan with Detroit, you look at the things that happened in Detroit, where you have a voter, but you have more votes than you have voters. You take a look at Detroit, Michigan, you have more votes than you have voters. And then you have two people that don't want to certify. They don't want to certify, and they're harassed violently, and they turned off the cameras during the harassment for two hours. And then they said, wow, and they were afraid, and they voted, and then they went back to sign, and they couldn't do it because they said, we can't do it because this is corrupt. This is horrible what's taking place. Think of it, more votes than you have voters, but that was the least of it. They have things that were as bad as that, and this is going on all over, all over. We're doing very well in a lot of states. A lot of good things are happening in Georgia. We're getting little help from government, but a lot of good things are happening in Georgia, Wisconsin, in, uh, Michigan. They're seeing what happened in Detroit, and we sure are looking at what's happening in Pennsylvania and Philadelphia. What happened in Philadelphia, they keep the poll watchers not only in pens, but they keep them out of the building. And the only reason they got back into the building was they got a court order. And then the definition of back into the building was very far away where they couldn't see anything. And they talked about closed-circuit television, except you couldn't see it because the picture was so unclear, you didn't even know what they were doing. They could have been playing a baseball game. So it's a very sad thing for our country to have this, and they have to turn over the results. It would be easy for me to say, oh, let's worry about four years from now. No, this election was lost by the Democrats. They cheated. It was a fraudulent election. They flooded the market, they rewarded everybody with ballots. And I just want to thank everybody for being there, and you're doing a tremendous service. This is a very important moment in the history of our country, and you're doing a tremendous service to our country. And, uh, don't worry about bravery, because the people that talk the most, they're not the ones you have to worry about, and these are all talkers. They intimidate. But these are not people that you're going to ultimately have to, they push you around. They pushed our poll workers out. Our poll watchers were pushed out of the building. Okay, the, uh, some got back in, they were put in the pens, but these are not people. Don't be intimidated by these people, but they're bad people. They're horrible people, and they're people that don't love our country. So we don't have to worry about four years right now. We have to worry about what happened on November third and previous to November third. And by the way, after November third, when people put votes in and they put them in illegally, they put them in after the polls closed, and one of our great Supreme Court justices made mention of that, and I can't imagine that any justice or anybody looking at it could be thrilled when they vote after the election is over. So I want to thank everybody very much for being there. I want to thank the State Senate, respected people, tremendous people, and you're doing a tremendous service for our country. And if something was done wrong, if this election was, was won fraudulently, and that's what happened, it was a fraud. And we're talking about, very importantly, many more ballots, many more votes than the number we need. In other words, if we needed fifty thousand votes, we're not talking about we found nine dead people that voted. Of course, there were many more than that, many numbers that nobody even believes. No, we're talking about numbers that are far in excess of the fifty thousand, far in excess of another state where we lost by ten thousand. And they went absolutely wild because we got far more votes than they thought possible. And they've just stepped on the gas, and they got caught, just like they got caught spying on my campaign. They got caught, exactly, they got caught doing this. So I really appreciate it, and the country appreciates it, and we have to turn the election over because there's no doubt, we have all the evidence, we have all the affidavits, we have everything. All we need is to have some judge listen to it properly without having a political opinion or having another kind of a problem, because we have everything. And by the way, the evidence is pouring in now as we speak, and I want to thank Rudy Giuliani for having the courage to do this. There were other lawyers that backed down because they were being screamed at. Rudy is a, uh, is the greatest mayor in the history of New York, and there's a reason. He's got great courage, and he doesn't care. He wants to do what's right. And I told him the other day, Rudy, you were the greatest mayor in the history of New York, and you see what happened to New York without Rudy. You were the greatest mayor, but this is more important, what you're doing now is far more important than being a great mayor of the city of New York and being its greatest mayor by far. By the way, by far, this is going to be your crowning achievement because you're saving our country. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
I, I think what you've just heard guarantees that a hundred years from now, that this is the most important public hearing ever held by the Senate Committee. We turn now for questions. Representative, Representative Ryan.
First of all, thank you very much, uh, Mayor, for being here and for all the testifiers. You know, sixteen years ago this week, I was called out of retirement and recalled active duty to go to Iraq to do the elections in Iraq in January thirtieth, two thousand and five. That was an extraordinarily secure election. As a former commanding officer of a civil affairs group and psychological operations command, I know how to do elections, and what happened in Pennsylvania from a process control perspective was absolutely a travesty. What I am concerned about is the remedy. How do we go from here? We, we see that there's a perspective from our counsel that a nineteen thirty-seven law provided the ability to appoint the electors to the Secretary of State, and I'm curious as to whether or not, sir, you believe a special prosecutor should be appointed at the federal level to look at all these irregularities, or whether or not there is still actions that can be done at the state level to ensure that, the goal of what we're attempting to do is to ensure, as we did for the people in Iraq and as I did with the people in Haiti, to ensure that the results are fair, accurate, transparent, and a representation of the will of the people of the United States.
My, uh, suggestion would be, and of course, there are several different remedies that you could have. One, one would be to declare that the votes that were not inspected properly, be declared null and void in that county and deducted from the vote total. It's essentially what they do in Wiscon, Wisconsin has the strictest absentee law in the country. They require an application for every ballot, and when they finish, they only count the number of absentee ballots that have an application. They deduct from the total from that county whatever are missing. So if you have five thousand absentee ballots but only four thousand applications, you deduct one thousand votes. And the reason they do that is to deter people from doing that in the future. Look, look at it this way, if you didn't deduct the six hundred and seventy-eight thousand or whatever it is votes that were not counted, there's no penalty for it. What stops them from doing it again next time? And it's, this is a question of not voters acting improperly. It's a question of the inferior offices of this state, because they're inferior to the legislature in this regard, acted improperly. They conducted a completely sham election. They're the ones who have to be penalized. It's a little like the exclusionary rule in criminal law. They've got to be taught, you can't do that. The other thing you could do is you could demand to see all of the, all of the envelopes that were cast aside. Like, I will virtually guarantee you're going to see a couple of hundred thousand envelopes that have no names, partial names, the same name. You could ask to see the ballots. You're probably going to see ballots that are official and ballots that are unofficial. You have two major gaps. You have the six hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy votes that were not inspected by anyone secretly put into the ballot box. And then you have this gap that I don't understand between the mail-in ballots you sent out, one point eight million, and the number you counted, two point five million. That's totally impossible to explain other than what some of the witnesses were suggesting, that they were, that they were basically, uh, stuffing the ballot box. I believe what happened is they never expected to be behind by seven or eight hundred thousand votes on election night. They expected to be behind by a couple of hundred thousand. In Philadelphia, to steal a couple of hundred thousand votes, they do it every year. And that's not going to be tough. Now you had a real big problem. So you had to create mail-in ballots, you had to stretch it out for a while. We didn't go into detail on the Dominion system, but we have two other experts who can show you how they injected votes into the Dominion system. And also, so I think I would settle, settle this election, but I would definitely appoint a special prosecutor to prosecute the people who conducted this election. You might even ask just a general question. You might even ask just a general question, how could the governor and the elections commissioner, how could they have selected a company that counts our votes outside the United States? I didn't know that.
Thank you, thank you. Rep. Representative Mall, questions for any of our panelists? This is like our lightning round here to conclude.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what I'm going to do is make more of a statement to throw out a timeline because to, to try and reiterate what everyone else has already done, just be, a couple of years ago, our Supreme Court in Pennsylvania very illegally redrew congressional maps. It's very clear in our constitution, that is a legislative act. Fast forward a couple of months ago, our Supreme Court rewrote our election law. Again, that is, needs to be done in statute, it is a legislative act. When it came to the mail-in ballotings, that, that House bill, I want to say it was 77, Act 77, I was really kind of taken aback by how eager the governor was to sign that bill. Normally bills can sit in his desk eight, almost 10 days before he signs them or lets them become law on their own or vetoes them right away and not when he signed almost instantaneously. And I just kind of wondered, so after I saw what happened in the primary, I wrote House Bill 2626. And this is where it kind of locks it in for me, Mr. Mayor and panelists. In House Bill 2626, I saw where there could possibly be stuffing the boxes. So I said simply, let's put a barcode on the bottom of every mail-out ballot so that a machine has to read a barcode that was accepted by the elections office. Before that ballot goes out, they zap it. When it comes back, if that barcode doesn't match one of the barcodes that they sent out, it gets kicked out. The governor immediately, as soon as we ran that bill out of committee, said, that hits my desk, it's an automatic veto. Not, not everybody knows that, but that came to us, we had to literally strip that out of the bill. And I will be reintroducing a bill to barcode any ballot that gets mailed out when we get back, trust me. Then we have the drop boxes, three days extra to vote, the ignoring the signatures and ignoring the postmarks. And I have to come to the conclusion that you did also, if it looks like corruption, smells like corruption, it's corruption and we've got to get to the bottom of it. Thank you for being here, thank you for your testimony, appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for being here. Thank you to all our testifiers today, it's been very informative. My question, Mr. Mayor, you touched upon it briefly, but I want to just, if you could delve it a little bit more into it. Attorney General Barr shortly after the election authorized the US attorneys across the country to investigate allegations of, of voter fraud. I wonder if you could tell us about the criminal investigations that are going on, maybe specifically in Pennsylvania by our US attorneys, maybe our FBI, and tell us how that is going and is there any evidence that's been presented to you or are you made privy to any of this information?
I'm sorry, Senator, I wouldn't be made privy to that, criminal investigations. And in my experience, criminal investigations, you know, would take too long to help you in your most immediate decision. Criminal investigations could help you in your long-term decision as to how to reform so this never happens again, which I think you all, you all will want to do. For example, not, not ever hiring again a company that counts votes in Frankfurt, Germany, that's owned by two Venezuelans who are very close to Hugo Chavez and Maduro. That's extraordinary. And unfortunately, we don't have the time to really analyze the votes, although if you want to go into greater detail, we have other forensic experts that can show you votes that were specifically put into the machine because these machines have a back door that allows you to do that. So I would say the criminal proceedings are going to take six months to a year. What you, what you have before you that you can verify is you have before you very, very clear evidence, it's not small, it's not as if these are a couple of little mistakes that happen in every, I hear people say, oh, every election has a couple of little mistakes, not 682,000 ballots that nobody got to inspect that from time immemorial, we, we've never had trouble in America with absentee ballots. I've been in absentee ballot contests in New York and they can, you know, they can be pretty vicious and the language is worse than that poor lady experienced. But we would never think of having one without the Republican there and the Democrat there. Even in New York, we would never think of it. Here, did it 700,000 times. That's an insult to, to the legislature because you didn't provide for that. And you've got this gap of 700,000 unexplained mail-in ballots that come out of nowhere. So I think you have more than enough to say that this election, the numbers don't add up. It's, it's easy to figure out what the right numbers are by excluding the illegal votes and count the honest votes and the winner of the election changes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Senator, Senator Mario Scavelo.
I'm just going to make a couple of comments. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out here today. We need your support, your continued support throughout this whole process because we're, we're going to also get the other side that don't want us to do anything at all and we definitely need to do something. We need to correct this problem. My Northampton County Chairperson, Lee Snowa, did an excellent job explaining what was going on in Northampton County. One of the biggest things that bothered me more than anything else was people that went back, went, went to vote and they were told they already voted. That happened, I must have heard it from 50 people between, in my district. So, you know, they, they, they made them sign a provisional and I called up and I says, I'm, you better make sure that those provisionals are counted. And some of the other things that were happening that, that, you know, most of the stuff that you said out there, it happened in every county. But when you didn't want to vote with your absentee and you went in, you're supposed to get a ballot, not a provisional. And there were people out there that got provisionals. But just a, a little information for all of you, the new machines, this new process, we didn't vote for it. That was something that was pushed by the governor. He mandated that they, all of the counties had to go and change their system because he wanted some type of, what we don't have is a form to see what they, who voted or what, what, who, who voted. They want a certificate or something, a slip to see how you voted, who voted. And it's obvious that this system has not worked and the people of Pennsylvania are not happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Madam Majority Leader-elect.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say what they did in Philadelphia, when they closed us out and made us go to court to do what we should have legally been able to do is a travesty to what, what we in Pennsylvania need to have confidence in our elections. That should never happen again and we should probably tighten our law so that it can't. Secondly, I'm extremely bothered by the, the absentee ballot and the mail-in ballot request number being almost 700,000 off from what we received. And so we just did try to get on the Department of State and they did take down their dashboard. So we can't even check it. So if you have any of that information, any pictures or any, you know, website downloads, we would really appreciate having those because they took it down. So I don't know, everything they do looks like they're trying to hide something and it really, really continues to erode any kind of confidence in our process.
Senator, what I would suggest is they decided that morning, or maybe a couple of days before, to exclude you because they knew what they were going to do. It wasn't done, it wasn't an accidental sort of whim to exclude all Republicans. It's unheard of to exclude all Republicans. They excluded you because of what you would see. You would see ballots that weren't properly filled out, you would see ballots that were filled out at the last minute. You would see them start to get reports of how far behind they were because they were connecting to Dominion and Smartmatic and they were telling them how far behind they were. And you would have caught them right in the middle of the fraud. And why create this big problem for yourself of excluding Republicans in six states, hundreds and maybe thousands of them, if you're not doing something wrong? If you're doing something, as the senator said, that's kosher, come on, look, who cares? This, this big thing wasn't done because they were conducting an honest vote, it's kind of crazy to think that. This was done because they knew this is the only way they could steal this election. And when he was ahead by those numbers on Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, they panicked. I'll also tell you, there's an expert witness who can testify that this pattern fits the pattern that Smartmatic used in two elections that they stole in South America. When the election was getting too far away, they called a halt in the voting count. Well, there was a halt called in six places, including in Pennsylvania. In one place, they may believe there was an overflowed water tank, happened to be one little toilet bowl. They took a two-hour halt and in Michigan, they brought in 100,000 ballots through the back door and counted them with nobody observing them except three people who happened to be remaining behind. That, that's evidence that's also in affidavits and could be presented to the Michigan legislature, those people are willing to testify. And just one other thing, these people are very brave people. A lot of people aren't testifying. They're backed up, they're backed up by 50 more who are willing to testify. Obviously, we can't present all of them. I want you to know that all of them are backed up by numerous witnesses who say the same thing. But there are probably another 50 who are not willing to testify, including probably what would have been one of our best witnesses because he's been threatened with the loss of his job and his children being thrown out of their private school.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Let's try our Zoom capabilities here. Senator Michelle Brooks calling in from Northwestern Pennsylvania.
Thank you, Senator Argyle. I did want to make a comment first. I join my colleagues in being concerned about the arbitrary Supreme Court decisions and their decision to decide to be legislators. And all Pennsylvanians need to be concerned about this. I, you know, it's not only the election or redrawing maps, what's going to be next that impacts our state? And so not only do we need to be looking at what happened with this election, we need to be looking at how we can stop the Pennsylvania Supreme Court from wanting to legislate when that's not what they're supposed to be doing. And it's very disconcerting, the decisions they made contrary to state law in regards to this election. My question is, if you could talk about the drop-off boxes, again, something the Pennsylvania Supreme Court allowed, talk about the security around them. I know in my area, I did not have a significant amount of drop boxes, but can you talk about what types of security or parameter, parameters of safety were around these drop-off boxes? And also, how many ballots were collected in these drop boxes? Thank you.
That, that of course is a subject of another lawsuit that was brought the other day, I only know it generally. The drop-off boxes were provided, speaking very broadly, in the Democrat part of the states, not in the Republican part, parts of the state. They were many, 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 very closely.